Take a look and make sure I'm on the right lot. I'm not, so.
You ready to go on? Got it for him.
Okay, everybody. It is seven o'clock. And we will open the regular Zoom meeting of the December 3rd, 2020 Planning Board of Woodstock. And so do you have any updates to the agenda, Melissa?
Nope, none at all.
Okay. Under Communications and Announcements, we have a letter from the town of Shandaken regarding the Brindis Lot Line Revision. I don't have that letter in front of me, Melissa, but
Basically, they approved it and I scheduled a public hearing for December 17th.
Great, fantastic. Okay, so before us tonight, we have four sketch plan reviews and a motion for a draft resolution at the end. So the first one is the estate of Betsy G. Stang and Christian Moschanus, Planning Board Case Number 20-0995A. This is a sketch plan review of a lot line revision to transfer four acres from SBL 261-1212. I lost it.
Well, no, she's sharing the screen. Oh, okay.
You can see the map?
We can see the map.
Hold up, hold up. I just gotta get back to my.
It makes it a little difficult.
Now I got it.
So to the Stang parcel, originally 69.04 acres located at 626 Wittenberg Road, to SBL number 26, 26.3-1-27, the Moschanus parcel, originally a 2.01 acre located at 696 Wittenberg Road, resulting in Moschanus parcel being 6.1 acres, then transfer 14.12 acres from SBL 26.326311, originally 26 acres. And that's located at 17 Johnit Lane. And that's been transferred to SBL 26.1-12.12, located at 626 Wittenberg Road, resulting in Stang's SBL at 12 acres and SBL 26.1 at 79 acres in the R3 and R5 zoning districts in Wittenberg. So it sounds a little complicated. We, this is we've, first time we've really had three parcels involved in a lot line revision. But but it's best described in a memo from Ellen Caceres, the Woodstock Building Inspector, in which she says, "This lot line revision involves three existing parcels of land. The first is referred to as Parcel One. It consists of 26.12 acres and contains the developed home of Betsy Stang. Betsy has passed away. Her son wishes to sell the home, but will first reduce the parcel size to 12 acres. The reduction in size has no impact on any zoning issues. The next parcel is a vacant parcel, 26-point, 26-point dash one dash 12-point 112. This parcel will take the 14-plus acres and combine it to 26.3-dash-two-dash63, thus increasing the size of this parcel to 79.16 acres. This new larger parcel has the minimum lot width as required for the R8, R5 zoning districts. There are no related zoning constraints." The third parcel in this revision is a parcel owned by Christian Moschanus. It is currently a two-acre parcel. The plan is to add four acres from Parcel 26.1112. This plan will only make the existing parcel more compliant with the R5 zoning district in which it resides. There are no zoning issues with this plan. So.
I just filled in the parcel so you can see them. I am fairly certain you can tell which is which.
Right. So the lot line revision is taking away the one line going north or, you know, south to north and putting one going west to east. And that's the first lot line change. Now, the second one involves the smaller parcel. And I have to admit, I looked at the map or the plot, the survey plot, and I saw the lot line deletion and new lot line on the one, but I didn't see it on the map for the other. So did I miss it or is it there? I only see one on the map. I only see one lot line deleted and one new lot line.
Well, there's a am I allowed to speak?
Sure, go ahead. Sure, go ahead.
Okay, there's a, if you, if you're looking at the new map, what we have is, we're looking now on the screen is the tax map. But if you, I don't know if you can share the screen with the, with the, with the sketch plan done by Robert Allison.
I don't know if I have it. Did it come in our mail?
Yeah, it's, it was in the email.
I can.
I need to find it.
Robert might be able to share screen it.
If you want to share, yeah, if you can let me share my screen.
Robert share screen. He can share screen the map and show you.
Okay.
Yeah. If you got, I gotta go. I have to find it on my computer because it's not my, let's see.
I will stop share, although it's possible for two people to do it at once. It's too complicated.
All right, so give me one second and I will. I have to find it here, get it up and open. I have a big map in front of me. It's not going to help us.
That's why.
Yes, 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 yes.
Give me one second here. All right. All right.
I have it if you don't.
I have it. I do have it if you want me to.
Okay, if you want to screen share, if not, I can.
I can do it. Just give me go back. I have to go back to.
I don't think I got it, Melissa.
Yeah, you did. It was, it was the application and the map.
Okay, I can, if I can share my screen. Here's the map. Share this. Can you guys see that now?
I see agendas, but I don't see.
Okay, now we can.
All right.
Now I gotta make it bigger here. You see this, we see my cursor? That line here is the, is the new lot line. This is the, this is the Moschanus two-acre lot. And then this adds the four acres is this line here.
Okay, so my point is that line does not say the new lot line.
Okay, you want to say.
I only see one new lot line on the, on the, on the plot.
Well, I see what you mean. It's just a, right. This one says new, new, new division line, right? This one doesn't say new division line. He's got to add that.
Okay, so you have to add that, right?
Yeah, yeah, Rob, Rob can do that, of course.
Okay.
So you're, you're adding two lines, one all the way over on the east side and the other one
On the west.
Yeah.
Both almost, they're almost horizontal.
Correct, almost, almost parallel. Yeah, they're pretty close, right?
Okay, so the Planning Board's point of view here, we have the letter from the Building Inspector and ZEO that all these lot line changes are in accordance with zoning and there's no zoning issues. So the one question is, the Planning Board always asks, are these lot lines near, new lot lines near any buildings that the setbacks would be involved in? And it certainly doesn't look that way, but
No.
that's something we have to make sure of.
Right.
That the new lot lines are not within a setback.
Yeah, the building.
And the second thing is to make sure the new lot lines are not interfering with septic and wells to any property.
Nope.
We don't want the septic on one lot and the well on the other.
No, they're all down here, all down here. The one, yeah.
So let me ask the Planning Board members if any members have any questions regarding this lot line revisions.
Looks normal and nominal to me. The wetlands are all in different places and they're not on the above the, they're not above the overlay line, so just normal real estate stuff.
Okay, and, and at the moment, Robert, there's no proposed new construction. Is that true?
That is correct.
Okay. Because when this new plot is submitted to the, you know, to the county for, to be filed, it will need to show that, as we said, that the one new lot line has to be labeled new lot line. And I don't know, I can't read it directly, but it, the, the table of Bulk Regulations has to show what the lots were before the changes and what they are after the changes. And that has to be in the table of.
So that would go up, up here in this table? Is that what you're saying?
No, it's a separate table. Melissa actually has a.
I can, I can email you and, and Rob what you need on it.
Perfect. That's, that's perfect, Melissa. If you just, if you note, note that we need that lot line labeled.
Yes, next week I'll, I'll go through and make sure we have the map.
They're going to decide an overhead heater, whether it's with mushroom heaters or a fart. So there is heating on every single table.
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing somebody.
Somebody should say something.
Mr. Stang, can you unshare your screen so I can go back to seeing everybody?
Sure, sure, sorry.
No, no worries.
Go ahead, okay.
All right, I don't know why it got small.
Robert's phone that says sales phone
We, okay.
was making enough sound.
Sales iPhone. Can you please mute yourself?
We have, we have.
Okay, so Robert, the, the things that we need added to.
Thank you.
As we just said, are the lot line, the new lot line, you noted the table which Melissa's going to give you for showing Bulk of Riggs before the changes and after, showing that it's all in compliance with the zoning, which it is, according to the zoning officer.
I'll go through the list and double check everything, Peter.
And the other thing that's, needs to be put on is the building setback lines, which were usually a faint dotted line going around whatever the building setback zoning is for those zones. So if it's a 75-foot setback, it needs to show a building setback line on the plot so that any future.
Is that just for the two lots, the 12-acre lot and the, and the new six-acre lot? That's what I have to show that. Is that right?
Right, the new created lots have to show a setback.
Setback lines.
Right.
Help prepare.
Okay, I have one question. Is Christine Moschanus here just because she had asked for an invite?
Yeah, she's here. Hold on one second.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, I just wanted to make sure you were with us and everything.
I'm here. I'm just kind of multitasking. Sorry.
Story of my life.
We're good at that.
You're good, right?
Okay. Um, yes, I'm good.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So let me ask the board if anybody on the board has any other issues with this, or we could set a public hearing if you don't.
I only have one question. What's the, what's the lot size requirement in the, in that area?
That is, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, on the map, it says this, a section of it, there's a line on the map that goes horizontally, that's below which, towards Wittenberg Road is three acres, above which is five acres.
So you're going to be kind of splitting the difference? What's the final size going to be of the Mohanus lot?
Oh, Mohan, the, 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 the Moschanus lot is six acres.
Okay, so.
They're, they're at six acres, they're going to be six acres, which is.
We checked all that.
Yeah, it's totally compliant. Oh, yeah, more than it was.
Yeah, great. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Anyone else on the board have any questions regarding this lot line revision?
No.
All right, well then, Melissa, if you could, whenever, how you do this with.
Yeah, Mr. Stang, Ms. Moschanus, I will call you in the next few weeks. I try to schedule meeting to meeting with the governor every once a month, the beginning of the month usually says whether or not we're, we're Zoom meetings or we're back to in person. So I try to schedule a little together, so I'll give you a call and we'll schedule a public hearing once I know what's going on.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Guys, thank you.
Nice, Peter, can I just ask one question?
Sure, go ahead.
Doesn't have to do their application, but are you in relation to the late, great Arnold Stang?
I am.
Interesting.
Yes, he was, he was my second cousin.
Excellent.
Yep.
I remember him. He's famous to me and I thought it was a resemblance.
It was very cool. What a chunk of chocolate. Yep.
Yeah, yeah, I bet you have stories. Anyway, thanks for answering my question. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. Okay, I'll sign off now, okay?
All right, Mr. Stang, I'll talk to you soon.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Bye-bye.
Stay safe. Okay, the second item on the agenda is Constantly Awesome, LLC SUP number 20-0579. It's a sketch plan review of a special use permit application for transient use of two apartments in the HC zoning district located at 17 Mill Hill Road in Woodstock. Now, if you all on the board remember, this is the old pub, which we had before us a while ago redoing the front of it and some other, a few changes. And upstairs were two apartments. And so is someone here for Constantly Awesome?
Is Jen here? Now you can unmute yourself. Ms. Ahern?
Is she on sales iPhone? Is that who?
I, I'm not sure, but I think.
Unmute. Am I here?
Hi, Jen, we hear you. Now I want you to talk to us.
Okay.
It's only my second Zoom. Hi, Peter, how's everyone?
Good, good. So would you please tell the board what your plan here is?
Okay, so when we reconstructed this, we renovated it from a one-bedroom to a two-bedroom. Obviously, you approved our plans prior to the new law passing, I guess, back in June. So our intention has always been to do two short-term rentals. You know, because we never thought that a long-term rental, well, anyone would want a long-term rental above a pub. And that's kind of how we constructed things. It is a little bit noisy up here. You know, and I know when we went in front of you guys, the only concern was, once the new law, if it came into effect. And it doesn't apply to us. The short term is my understanding from Butch when I filed the application that we needed a special operating permit, but we'd like to function as two short-term rentals. I think it would be difficult to do one long-term rental. Number one, due to the noise, but number two, as a renter, knowing you've got an Airbnb unit right next to you. You know, it just, I, I don't see how that'd be desirable and, you know, I don't know how we'd reduce our funds because we're so over budget. And, you know, when we did it, that was our intention.
Jen, Jen runs into this new law again, that we've seen a few cases where she was fine before, and then this new SDR law came into play. And she needs an SUP to kind of continue onward from you guys. Just, just a heads up, Planning Board.
Okay, any questions from the board regarding this?
Well, I picked up a rumor that they had reduced the number of licenses. Is that correct?
Um, yes.
Does it affect this?
No.
Okay.
Nope, this has nothing to do with that one.
Stuart, you have a question? Stuart?
Yes, okay, so what's the current use of the space that's had issue here?
Well, the current use has been short-term rentals. I mean, we do get people who stay a month, you know, at the longest so far. We've only been doing it a year. We started a little later than the opening of the pub. But that's until we got the cease and desist letter. That's basically been the function of it, is to be a short-term rental.
So you're looking to legalize the, what you're doing now? Is that? Is that right?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I wasn't aware it was illegal until we received the letter. But then again, when I went to put the application in, apparently it was a generic letter for short-term rentals, which they made, they said, don't file that one. You're going to need a special operating permit. So.
Still there?
Yeah, sorry about that.
Has, has anyone from the Building Department been in there to take a look at, at the present use?
I think both Ellen and Butch were here when they, you know, gave the final approval of the renovation.
They've had all the inspections done, like this is, this is the final piece to kick back so they can continue to operate.
Thank you.
Correct.
Does anybody else on the board have any questions regarding this SUP?
Do not.
Yeah, I guess we could set a public hearing.
Okay, that'd be great.
Jen, I'll call you as soon as I can schedule it in the next few weeks.
Okay, that sounds great. And then we'll go from there?
We'll go from there.
Okay, thank you for your time, guys. Everyone stay well.
You too.
Good evening.
Good night, thank you.
Have a good day.
Okay, the third item on the agenda is Rodrigo and Maria Carlos, which is Planning Board Number 20-1137C. And this is the second sketch plan review of a subdivision application of a 10.51-acre lot into two parcels of 7.51 acres and three acres in the R3 zoning district located at 207 John Joy Road in Woodstock. And Surveyor Charles Holtz is one of the reps. Or he's the survey, I guess, and the rep is the applicant. So this subdivision has been before us. This is the second plan review. The first one came before us and everything was okay, except we wanted the wetlands on the plot and we wanted the 100-foot setback or the 100-foot zone around the wetlands shown on the plot so that there was no intrusion into the wetland buffer zone. So I believe that the plan has now been changed to show that, that the wetlands are on the map. The 100-foot setback is on the map and the buildings are out of the setback. So is the applicant have anything to add to this request?
No, everything is, like you said.
Okay. So I don't know if we can show it on the screen, if anybody has it that can actually put that on the screen so that the board can see that we've complied with, with the wetland.
I can, I can try. Do you want me to try to bring it up?
Yeah, just so the board can see that.
Got it.
To click the little blue button in addition to the share screen.
All right, how do I share screen, Judy?
First, you click the green thing at the bottom that says share screen. Then down at the lower right, within that green frame, you're going to see a blue button that says share.
All right. Okay. Do you guys see it?
Here it is.
Okay, good job. Okay, so here we have the plot. You can see John Joy Road on the bottom. And the new lot line and the setback 100-foot buffer from the wetland. So does anybody on the board have any questions regarding this subdivision?
Yes, Stuart, can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Stuart.
Oh, it's hard to make out the writing, but I looked at this earlier. On the left side parcel, the larger parcel, there's a large rectangle to the right of the proposed house. Is that a proposed septic field?
I believe so, yeah. I can't read it myself, but.
Yeah.
You can get in closer. Up at the top of the window, it says view options.
Yeah.
If you click on that little down arrow, you will see zoom ratio.
Yeah, 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 okay. Okay, that, thank you, Judy. So my question is, and Peter and anyone else on the board, is there a concern about the proximity of the proposed septic field rectangle to that dotted line which marks some kind of buffer for the wetlands? Is there any separation that there has to be between the septic and the wetland?
No, typically you can go right up to the buffer with septics, even roads, even driveways. Wells themselves can be inside the buffer because the way it's looked at, once the well is drilled, it's no longer a, you know, a, an interference with the wetland. But no, the, it's quite common that the SDA is, is right up to the buffer.
Okay, SDA being?
There's a septic disposal area.
Okay, thanks. Learning. Thank you.
Anybody else on the board have any questions regarding this?
Where's the well?
I saw it once before, but I, I can't, I'm not looking. I don't know how to zoom in myself.
Maybe Rod can answer that.
What was the question?
Where's the well?
I'm sorry, I can't, I, I, you're garbled.
Where is the well located on the map?
On the seven-acre parcel or three-acre parcel?
The three-acre.
On the lower right.
I see it, I see it, I see it, yeah. I see it. All right, anybody else have any other questions? If not, we can set up a public hearing.
Yeah, I don't see it, but that's okay.
Right down, way down on the bottom.
Right. Right, right, right.
All right, Melissa, you want to set a public hearing up for this case?
Um, Rod, I'll give you a call as soon as I can fit it on the schedule and let you know when we can do the public hearing.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Everybody.
Thank you. I see.
Checking out, thanks.
Okay, Rod. Okay. Fourth item on the agenda is 15 Rock City Road, LLC SPR 20-033A in a sketch plan review for a site plan review application for site plan modification to convert existing retail space into restaurants located in the HC zoning district of 15 Rock City Road in Woodstock. As you all know, this was photo essentials before. And we went through quite a bit on the planning board to, to get it to fit into that spot, parking-wise. So if somebody could put up, if there is a proposed site plan, if they could put it up on the screen, that would be great.
Konstantin is here. Can you do that for us?
Oh, can I put it up?
Yeah, if you could put the site plan up.
Do you know how?
No, I actually have all, everything printed here. I don't have it, uh.
Okay. All right, I can.
I can, I can show the map anyway, but it doesn't show very much because it's.
Yeah, I think, I mean, there's two issues going here.
I can pull up the plans. I'll pull up the plans.
Okay, thank you.
As, as everybody probably knows, or John knows, it used to be the Seahorse, which was a bar. And then it got turned into Photo Sensialysis, which is kind of a art, art, you know, photographic art sales place, almost like a gallery. So now to go to a restaurant. I think Melissa has, has, has the Building Inspector given any information on this?
Yep, she just, referral for you guys. Let me find it.
She has seen it, though. She has been.
But she's been out.
They're not getting the whole thing, though.
Is this the building that So was in or Lotus Gallery?
No, that's up the street. Lotus is in the old frame shop. This used to be the Seahorse way back when.
But was it So like that?
I think so.
That building that was the fabric like?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
It was So Woodstock.
Right.
Most recent. Most recently.
So. And then a vintage place recently.
So let me ask John about what he thinks. Is this a change of use we're going to be dealing with?
This, this, pause, hang on. What Ellen had put it up as is modifications to existing site plan. Convert retail into restaurant kitchen addition, create outdoor seating, interior renovations, parking and lighting changes.
Okay. But is it a change of use?
So from restaurant, from retail to restaurant.
Right, from retail to restaurant.
Sounds like it to me.
Right. So that's one issue. The next issue is has anybody done the, the, the parking?
Calculations?
Calculations, because we barely fit it in for the.
No, no, there's not been any calculations done for parking. There's obviously not a lot of parking on the site. So.
Of course, we know you're right next to the town parking lot.
Yeah, on both sides of the, both sides of the building, there's park, town parking lots.
But the, the issue will be that to satisfy the zoning codes that we have to work with, we have to provide parking for employees and seats or square footage within the building, whether it be tables and chairs or just square footage. And that, that will give us a parking calculation, which if that exceeds what you have on site, which I'm pretty sure it does.
It definitely will. We're expecting a calculation for sure.
Right. So then what happens then is that you can actually purchase parking spaces from the town board. And I mean.
We're aware of that.
Yeah, that's where we stand at this point, even though you have a parking lot next to you, a town parking lot.
I understand that.
Right. Now, of course, the town board sets the fee. I mean, there's a set fee, but they, they can make it. They can make deals with you, in other words, as far as the fees go. Because you are.
We can code loosely what the fees are and you know, we, we are familiar with it because we do have another restaurant in town. So we've gone through this before.
Okay. All right. So let me ask the board members for their questions and input on this proposal.
I have a question. What is the difference between retail to restaurant for parking?
The parking, nothing. It's, the parking's based either on seats or square footage of the building.
So because it was most likely zoned for retail before, like what did they already have for parking?
It was close. We barely made it.
I think it was, there was eleven parking spots, I believe.
Eleven parking spots. So and what do you need then for your amount of seating that you're showing that you would need for parking spots?
We, the, the, there will be probably about ninety seats inside. And then addition, then additional seating outside.
And so per per seat for parking, what do you, what is that? Again, I don't know what that is.
I think there's a calculation that's made that you guys would maybe know better than I, but it's a certain amount every three seats or something. So they get a number of how many we have in the restaurant or how many seats we have divided by a certain percentage. Outdoors is different to indoors. And, and then they come up with a calculation of what that fee would be to the town as, as I understand it.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah.
How many outside seats?
Uh, there's about sixty.
So is it one space per three, Peter, on the outside?
You know.
That's divided in half, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and plus on the outside, it's seasonal, so you don't pay full price.
You pay half.
Right, right, right.
And I do have a question about that. Would, would there be, I mean, I don't know who we negotiate this with.
The town board.
Town board.
The town board?
Yeah.
Now, because we're in time of COVID, we have an additional period where we don't know how long this will last. We can only see half the seats for maybe another year or two. We don't know. So.
With what, with what, something you could bring up to the board?
I know that Bill is willing to discuss a lot of like zoning variances right now. And you should actually bring that up directly to Bill.
Yeah.
McKenna and.
I will.
He would potentially give you some, you know, some leniency with that and you should take advantage of it, like.
Look, who is going to make the calculation or give us the exact numbers?
Well, either you give us a complete site plan showing all the chairs and tables.
Yeah.
Or you have someone, an architect or someone do that and present us with the calculation.
He's here right now. He has all that stuff.
Yeah, it's on there, actually. If you go to the next page, that's the original survey. If you go to the next page, which is A two hundred, is a demo plan. And then the next plan is the seating plan after this.
This one or keep going?
Keep going, one more. So this shows, no, keep going. So this shows the outdoor space, which is shaded, right? This is outdoor seats. And then those are the indoor seats on the first floor. And then the subsequent page has the seating on the second floor. But this shows all the items so that there were two accessible parking spots and we actually just relocated those a bit. You could see from this page. So we kept the two accessible spots. And then there is parking at the, you see on the bottom of the screen, we have four spots for employees. And then we also have the big parking lot that's adjacent to the property. But this shows the construction of what we're doing. It shows the covered outdoors, covered outdoor space and then all the new seats in the bar on the interior.
Okay. And while we're on that subject, the other thing you would need to, to get to the board is from this Woodstock Town Water and Sewer regarding septic and grease traps.
Yeah, we have.
Because it's a restaurant, there needs to be grease traps.
Yeah, we have a plan. You, you will see is like by the cars at the top, it says two grease traps. Sorry.
Right. Washing is there right to the top.
Yeah, go back like to top left there where the two cars are.
Here?
Yeah, below there. It says two grease traps.
Right here.
Yeah, that's your dishwashing station and the grease trap will be right outside that area.
Okay, so that would have to get approval from the Woodstock Town Water and Sewer.
What about the fire and safety for the second floor?
The, the egress works. We have to seventy-five feet to the second means of egress. But other than that, it didn't really change from the initial design. The, the second floor remains unaltered. We're just taking out an old door there and putting in a window so that we didn't really change anything on the second floor.
So the accessibility to the second floor is from the first floor?
Correct. There's a staircase that goes to the second floor. And if you pan down to the next page, you can see the second floor. The only work we're doing is just putting some additional seating up there. But there, you can see there, there's a couple of tables. But other than that, the second floor remained unchanged. We're not doing any real work up there, just maybe some, some seating. And then there was a an old door there that went to, you know, went to nothing, but we were just putting a new window in. But other than that.
Ellen, Ellen did look at this and we discussed it with Ellen and she said that the two egresses from the building would be sufficient for the upstairs dining.
Are you doing lunch and dinner or just dinner?
Just dinner.
Okay.
Now, there's no elevator, right? That, that little X in the bathroom, that's not an elevator, is it?
No, no elevator.
But you've got most of your seating downstairs, so you're accessible anyway.
Yeah, most of the seating is downstairs.
Uh, uh, one other point I'd like to make, if you could scroll back to the original site plan. Just something that I know John's aware of. I don't know how else, but to the north where the road exits out.
Yeah.
There was some talk about a year or two ago from Jay Wink, actually, about the town putting a pocket park there. And if they did, that would strictly reduce things. Does, does anybody know anything more about that?
A what? Sorry, a pocket park?
A pocket park, a little tiny park that the, the town originally wanted to put right there. And I don't know if that's been dropped or still in the works, but.
Peter, I haven't heard anything about that pocket park in probably three years.
Okay. All right. Just to make sure that wasn't still going. Anybody else on the board have questions regarding this application?
Just to comment, it's, it's nice to see a plan that is close to existing parking. So the parking purchase has some meaning.
Yeah.
What type of restaurant?
Stuart?
Just curious.
What type of restaurant?
Yes, yes.
It's sort of similar to what we do right now at Sylvia Restaurant. It's like a farm to table food. We sort of do world cuisine. It, you know, the, the, the menu hasn't been completely worked out at this time. We're still working on that. But it's similar stuff to what we already do in our other location, maybe geared to a little bit more of a takeout. And and also actually a little bit lower price point.
I was going to ask about that. I thought your food was wonderful, but it wasn't pricey.
Yeah, it was. Good, good produce is not cheap, unfortunately, you know? They're all local farm stuff that we buy, best quality stuff we can find, which is there's so much great produce from the, our local farms.
Yeah.
And, and, and we will continue to do that. But this is planning, as I say, to do more takeout than the other restaurant. And also, yeah, we're going to try and lower, get that price point down a little for sure.
And you're going to pursue a local license and all that, too?
Yes, that's in the works.
Um, one other question. Are you planning any changes to the exterior at all?
Not really.
Not going to paint it black?
Yes, that's what I was going to.
I don't want to go through that again.
That's what I was getting at.
But we, we're thinking of just leaving it the same color, you know, maybe a new coat of paint or a stain, but pretty much the same as it is. We'll obviously paint the trim a different color. It's some sort of bright lime green right now. There'll be something to match, but the.
I'm not fond of the black, actually. I think it looks great.
Well, thank you. We, 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 we thought so too. I'm glad that people like it. But, but the main change to the outside is nothing from the, that you see from the street, just the the patio on the back of the building.
Good idea.
Peter?
Stuart?
Yes. Yeah. So I wanted to know is how's the refuse from the operation going to be stored? Where is it going to be stored on premises? And is there a plan for pickup?
Sure. I mean, there is a, we have garbage plan. On the plan, it shows where the garbage regular garbage pickup will be. And what we do with the food, the foodstuffs, we have that picked up two or three times a week from the restaurant and that goes into making compost. It's a company that we work with who they put all that food into composting and it's sort of cooperative, cooperative in Woodstock where they make compost and then they give that out to people in the community.
Okay, Craig, but where is the, in between pickups, where is it going to be stored on the site?
Oh, it'll be inside. It'll probably be in the inside. It gets picked up regularly, by the way, every day or two. But we have a walk-in cooler and that it's left in the cooler.
And we're. I think Stuart wants to know where the dumpsters themselves.
Yeah, the dumpsters are.
It's on the plan on A two hundred. If you go down one more.
Thanks, Constantine.
Yep, actually, one more after this. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
One more, one more.
You're killing me.
No, you got it now.
Right. So here where the cars are, there's a dumpster there, two dumpsters. Yep, right there.
Okay. And where's the pickup point? Do they pick it up from the dumpster or you have to bring it out to the road? Any of the garbage?
No garbage goes out to the road. The, the, the garbage truck will drive in there and pick it up.
Okay. And, and how far is that from the brook itself, the tannery brook to the rear?
If you scroll down a little more, you'll see the brook. It's there's the brook.
And the gray, the gray drops there dramatically after that line where the car.
Here's tannery brook.
Yeah.
Here's the dumpsters.
Okay. Okay. And in your development of this property, is there any, are you going to be doing interior renovations or?
Yes, we are.
Demolition and?
Yeah, there's a little demolition, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Not a lot, to be honest, but there is some.
Okay. And we're, we're stored on, on site?
Excuse me?
The demolition debris will be stored on site?
Yeah, it'll probably be put in a dumpster and towed away.
Okay. Okay.
Outside lighting, is there any new outside lighting proposed?
We're, we're actually doing two things. Right now, existing there is these, if, if you go to the, right.
Keep going, right?
Actually, if you go back to the original, go back to the original survey in the beginning.
This one?
Yeah, this prop, we're actually making the lighting a lot better because this, this site has, you can see lamp posts, has these very tall, maybe twenty foot lamp posts with very harsh lighting, it's un, unshielded. We're going to remove those lights because we feel like they're unattractive and way too bright for the property. So for our demo plan, if you scroll down one page, we're going to be removing all twenty foot tall kind of these really tall parking lights. And then the, the, the new lighting that we're going to be putting in is going to be within the covered. Actually, now you can scroll down to the sections, which is probably three sheets down, right?
This one?
No, keep going. One more. That's the roof plan. So here, these sections here show our covered dining area. So any new lighting is going to be within, underneath the roof, which will have maybe a few hanging pendants, which we submitted some specs on, which are more like just kind of a low, low voltage, warm LED dimmable, almost like lampshades that are good for the outdoors. And then in between these rafters, exposed rafters, which is the outdoor space, will be concealing these small spotlights with a long cowl. But all our outdoor lighting will be underneath a covered area. So you won't have a lot of light pollution spilling out of there. And then the large parking lot lights that are there existing, we're going to be removing those. So right off the bat, we're going to be removing a lot of light pollution coming off of the existing structure.
Okay, so the two questions are, number one, all lighting has to be dark sky compliant. If it's underneath something, it obviously is being contained, but I don't know that it's considered dark sky compliant. And secondly, we have to make sure that no light spills out beyond the property, especially onto the street.
Absolutely not, yeah.
So. That is completely covered?
Yeah, it's completely covered, right? And I do, we did submit some 3D renderings. We did a rendering of the existing building. We, we, we sent over three three perspective shots of the existing building and then a few of the of the proposed, but they weren't part.
It's a separate file, but you guys got all that, too. They had all the specs.
We took the, because this is in the back of the building, the, the inside of the barn has this beautiful exposed beam work. So the extension we're putting on the back has a kind of a gable roof, but the gate, the ridge isn't in the middle, which would make it feel a lot taller. It's more of a low slung asymmetrical gable roof, which mimics what's happening inside some exposed rafters. But it keeps the, the design in, in the same style as the, the existing building. But it, it has a lower profile, so it's not very obvious from, from anywhere else behind the building.
Okay. So you, you can see the point we're getting at is we, we need lighting to be safety so that people walking from their cars to the building don't trip or fall on things. But we also need the lighting to not spill out over the property or interfere with traffic, you know?
Yeah.
So I don't think this plan has any, any light that's going to be spilling into the, the main road at all.
And then after, if you go back to the first plan again, the, the floor plan, we kind of, actually, you know, one, one more down from there. I'm sorry. Two, two more down from there. So one, one more. So if you look at the, at the outdoor space, we labeled A's and B's. So the B's right in the middle of our outdoor space are kind of our hanging pendants. We have one, two, three, maybe four, five, six of these small hanging pendants. And the rest of those are kind of, you know, they're within the rafter bay as well. They're not, not only covered by the roof, but we have two by twelve rafters, sixteen inches on center. And any light, any spotlight is going to go in between the rafters. So it's really going to just conceal it and keep it at a table instead of spilling out to the street.
And. Sorry, go ahead.
Are you going to have heaters in the winter like you do at Sylvia's?
Yes. Yes. I mean, right now, we feel with COVID, obviously, outdoor dining has become incredibly important. And people really like it. And so, you know, right now, we, we would continue with the space heaters like we do at Sylvia's. So people will be able to sit out here in colder, in colder weather, you know? Obviously, I doubt January, but certainly through spring and fall should be comfortable out there.
So let me ask Judy's question. Do you have parking for disabled and is it paved?
Yes.
Okay, whichever, I don't know how many disabled spots you're required to have under the numbers here. But whichever one they are.
I think we're required to have one, but we actually have two.
We have two. Actually, if you scroll down only about a half of an inch, you could see the, our two accessible spots right there. And then we have a blacktop pavement, five feet wide, that brings you right to the front door of the building.
Yeah, I see.
That's, that was my question. That has to be blacktop, so that's, that's. Any other questions, Judy, on that one?
Well, the only observation I wanna make is the way that that is set up. Is there sidewalk next to the, on the left side there, right?
Correct, that's the five-foot-wide blacktop, right?
Yeah, it's probably not gonna be van accessible, which is a question. Because a lot of vans have a side ramp. And that's why when you see two parking spaces, there's a gridded area in between. I don't know if you have room to do that, but.
What, what there is, at the front of that, that corridor, up to the front of the building, there is a larger blacktop space where a van could definitely pull in and let people out to come in, to straight into the building. Yeah, if you scroll down a little bit, you should be able to, the other way, sorry. Yeah, went to the road, go all the way to the road. You can't see it, I can't see it right now because all our faces are in the way. So, but I don't know what you're looking at. But right next to the road, on Rock City Road, as you turn into that turning, there's a large blacktop area already, which could easily be large enough for a van.
Yeah. I'm thinking about, you know, people who drive themselves and they usually have an automated ramp. And they're actually sitting in their wheelchair at the wheel.
Yeah, they, 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 they would be able to get out right there. And in fact, it would be right next to the front, the front entrance of the building.
But you're assuming somebody else is driving or you're assuming that they leave the van there?
If they had to leave the van there, they could leave the van there. And it just, we would only have an issue if there was three people handicap parking, if there were two other people who wanted to park at the time or hadn't parked. Because the handicap parking is further down that road.
And your employee parking is all there and everything else is off-site, isn't it?
The employee parking is on the other side of the building.
Yeah, with its own access?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Quick question. Um, any kind of ideas regarding interior decoration, maybe? Because this was the Seahorse, as Peter mentioned earlier. There were a lot of, you know, fairly famous people that performed here.
Sorry, what, what was the question?
Interior decoration. Any kind of homage to some of the performers that appeared in that building?
I'm not aware of stuff that went on in that building. Of course, we went through this in a big way with the other building, which was a lot more well-known, the Joyous Lake. And, and you know, yeah, we did a little nod, homage to Ron and Valma. We have their photos on the wall that was given to us by their family. But I'm not familiar with anything that may have, I've never been told that this was a famous.
Just, just put a life ring up on the wall, you'll be okay.
That would make it an infamous place.
Sure, Bob Dylan's left there.
Anybody else on the board have questions regarding this?
I do have a question, that's Brian. Given how comprehensive and thoughtful this plan is, I'm wondering if you folks would consider taking over the Woodstock Public Library project?
You know, that would be a wonderful thing to get involved in one day. I mean, we've watched it so closely. And, you know, we, I definitely have my opinions on what's going on there, but as do everybody.
Yeah.
It's a shame that we can't get a new library.
Um, any idea what it's gonna be called, your new restaurant?
You know, that's the one thing we haven't come up with yet is an actual name for the restaurant. We've, we've, we've thrown a few ideas around, something that's personal to us, but.
Well, mine's already taken.
Sylvia North.
We, we haven't quite come up with something yet, but as soon as we do, we'll, we'll let the world know.
Peter, is this, this building's already hooked up to the sewers?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay. And any question of capacity or modification now would have to be taken up with the, with the water and sewer department?
Yeah, he has to approve the grease traps, that their size, right?
Yeah.
Right now, they still have excess capacity.
They being? They being the, the system itself?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, one question about signage. Do you, are you, what's your plan for the sign?
So if you go down to A400, it's probably one of the last sheets. These are our exterior elevations, right? So actually, the one we're looking at, actually, scroll down again.
There, go back.
Right, so that's the existing front elevation of the building. So the front door stays in the same location. And right above that, what we're doing is, you could see there's an area that's shaded above the front door.
Yeah.
An area that's dashed. So right now, there's existing four goose neck lights that, of course, angle the light towards the building, towards a very large sign. So right now, our signage is the shaded part. It'll be smaller. We're gonna remove the old signage and remove two of the lights. And then we'll have two, we're gonna keep the two lights in the middle for our signage. So it'll go there, and that's, it'll be smaller than the other one. And we're also gonna remove two of the four lights, and, but we're gonna keep it in the same location.
And that's the only sign that you'll have?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any board members have any other questions regarding this application?
I do not.
Well then, I guess, Melissa? I think we can go to a public hearing. The drawings seem to have everything needed.
Okay, so my only question is, we need, tell me what we need. We need, they need to reach out to.
Sewer and water.
I can connect you with a number, but you need, so we're gonna need a letter from them. And then what else? That's it, right?
Well, I, I'm still not quite sure about the change of use issue. And I guess a letter from the CEO would.
Okay.
Would satisfy that.
Okay. I'll be in touch to schedule a public hearing. You can contact me and we'll, we'll work on the sewer and water and get you in touch with them.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thanks, guys.
Great, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Open again?
Huh?
Is Sylvia open again?
Yes, Sylvia's back open. And, you know, reduced capacity, obviously, and very socially distant. We still have the, the weather's been warmish, so people are on the deck. And we're as careful as we possibly can be.
Yeah, well, stand by because Ulster County just announced restrictions in the city of Kingston.
Yeah, I mean, you know, whatever happens, happens. We, we know that there's not, if.
It's, it's a sad time for all of us.
It's a very tough time.
Well, I wanna tell you, I've never enjoyed a $30 pork chop more than I did when I had it at Sylvia's a couple of years ago.
Well, that's always great to hear, you know? I'm glad you enjoy it. It's, we, we were very fortunate. Our partner Doris is an incredibly talented chef.
All right, well, good luck on your new adventure.
Thank you so much.
And glad to see the Seahorse will be coming back to life.
There you go.
The only thing that won't come back is Odette performing there.
Okay, board, so we have unfinished business.
Here.
Yep.
I just wanna tell you, I do hear from Lotus Gallery that they were the Seahorse, not so. The other building farther down was the Seahorse, weren't they?
No, the other way around. Lotus used to be, first it was the.
Brass Rail.
Brass Rail.
Village Jug.
Village Jug. I know, I was there.
We were told Purple Elephant, does that ring a bell?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
That was a clothing, that was a clothing store.
Ah, I was told that was the bar.
Sold fancy boots.
It was a real bar.
Okay, so, on to unfinished business. We have to make an adoption, I mean, a motion to adopt a revised draft resolution for RISB and REEMR, which is SUP 20-055. And I know Stuart and Melissa worked very hard on this, so I'll let you guys finish it up. Stuart?
You're, you're muted, Stuart.
You're muted, Stuart.
He doesn't wanna talk to me anymore. He doesn't wanna talk to me anymore.
What, me worry? I'm changing my name to Alfred E. Newman. Anyway. How'd you like the, I don't know if anyone else remembers Arnold Stang, but that took me.
Well, I remember him well.
He had a rather unique, you know, sounding.
For my time, although I remember the name for some reason.
He used to be on all the commercials for chunky candy or whatever, all these.
Oh.
Yeah, he was quite a good comedian.
Yeah, he was pretty unique. Anyway, that was fun. So RISB and REEMR, you recall that with Connor's effort, there's been a move to have these drone photographs to establish a baseline for proximity to the tree canopy up in the scenic overlay and so on. And so this is the first case that we've had involving that. And so we came up with some language to require, or as a condition of the permit, that they have the photos provided within 30 days and reserve the right of the planning board to impose further conditions after we look at it, if there's anything that we need to put on there. But just, we shouldn't delay. If we get the photos and there's something, we should put it up in front of a meeting pretty quickly so that they can't come back later and say, well, you waited too long, you know, that kind of thing. But the language went back and forth, and my last recollection of that was okay. So I'm gonna move to that the planning board adopt the draft resolution for RISB and REEMR as revised, as last revised under SUP 20-0555.
Second.
On favor?
Aye. I want to mention, I found the property on Google Earth. And the quality of photographs from Google Earth is amazingly better than what we get from the state ortho. Except that they went over, the last time they went over in full summer. So you can really see the tree cover. And that whole property is like solid trees.
This is a test. I mean, I, I really appreciate what Connor is working on and the angle he's getting at. But we've never put this to the test. We won't know till five years from now when someone says, go up there and shoot it again and see if anything's changed. I, you know, that, that, that we've never done, so.
I know, with this, I feel like we're laying the foundation for the next ones that come along. Um, you gotta approve my minutes.
Okay. Yeah, I have two more things to do. But okay, we have the minutes from November 19th, 2020. If nobody has any issues with them.
Motion to approve.
Then we can adopt them.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the other thing I just wanted to quickly mention, as you probably all know, Bill has asked the board to, to chime in on the idea of affordable housing. As, as John well knows, we've gone through several affordable housing committees. And the planning board has spent quite a bit of time on it. But it hasn't been solved. You know, the state's position is that we're like 200 units short in the town of Woodstock. And, you know, we keep looking at the town land, the few pieces of property that the town owns. And we've looked at that over and over and over and haven't. It's not really gonna solve the issue. But so if anybody on the board has any ideas, the, you know, the Affordable Housing Committee or, or Bill would love to hear from you.
I, I submitted the initial conversations that you guys had, your initial comments. I submitted that to Bill to pass on to the, the housing committee. And I have an ongoing log of just the communication about it. So if, feel free to add to it or whatever, and we'll go from there.
I, I had asked, I know that Bill mentioned the possibility of using two lots that are owned by the town up in Minden, the woods on Xena Highwoods Road. On one of them, it's over a three-acre lot. And he was, they said they were talking about putting two houses, two buildings on there, two houses. And I asked to be supplied with a map so I can see exactly where they think the lots are. Because, because my understanding is that it's a three-acre lot. If it's where I think it is, it's a heavily tree-forested lot with very little level land. The land up here is kind of wavy, and there's a lot of rocky outcroppings of high geological interest to me.
Can somebody get me an SBL for it?
I, I sent, I sent Stuart's email in the contact.
Yeah, so I don't know how practical that is. And to force that kind of change on a, on a kind of a unique area like that, just to gain, you know, a couple of apartments or whatever they, they would be, it's not really addressing the larger problem, but. Yeah, exactly. I mean, Paul Sheldon's worked very hard on this. And we did look at those lots over and over, every lot the town has. And the planning board for years has basically come up with the same conclusion that our problem is our zoning doesn't allow for any more lots like Judy has or lots like the Flats, you know, a .8 acre, a .6 acre lot. You can't have those anymore. And that's what people need for first homes, for starter homes, for local families.
Yeah.
So what, all the planning would have said over and over, we need to be able to make some of those smaller lots. And a lot of them, actually.
I think Bill's idea about doing something possible with the Xena School property and rezoning is a really good idea, and I fully support it, and I'll do anything I can help him with it.
That would be a condominium structure?
I totally agree. But remember what we went through with Robco, with Woodstock Commons? And, you know, Robco spent well over a million dollars to get through the planning process, and it took over five years. So.
Start now.
Yeah, so for developers, it's, it's, it's a tough sell. But definitely a needed, a needed thing. We need, we need, I know the term is not correct, affordable housing. They don't like that term, but we do need it.
We need a income.
Yeah, exactly. So anyway.
Like, was it, I walked that property, I walked Xena School a couple of weeks ago, because it just went up. I think it's about 1.18 or something like that, which I think is fairly affordable. There's no doubt in my mind, you could probably get 40 units out of that, at the very least, if you converted it and.
Oh, is the con, is the concept condominiums, then? Affordable condominiums?
I think that was just an idea. I think that was Butch's idea in the last email that we.
Yeah, well, he said, oh, they're occupied, and I couldn't figure out what else it could be, but nobody answered.
I think, I think it's more like that, like townhouses or condominiums. Because I think that's the only way it'll fit into zoning.
It's a nice leveled piece of property. I mean, they wouldn't have to, like, you know, carve into the land too much or anything like that. And it's not really being used.
You could have a solar field there, huge solar field. It could be self-sufficient, yeah, and people could get creative on it.
One of the best examples I've seen of this type of thing is, is called Cantine Island in Sawgadis. And it's a, it's a, an area, it's a small piece of property, actually. But they've built all these nice little structures. And it's sort of like the condominium idea that you.
It's a co-housing, it's a co-housing community, a friend of mine.
And you, you own it, you actually own the, and the parking is separate, off, out of the way. And it's a pretty nice setup.
It's a community building.
Yeah, but, you know, the thing with the school is the same thing in, in West Hurley, you know? That school has been looked at from developers and developers and developers. And it's just a tough, a tough one to.
Was the concept to tear it down and use the, the land, or was it to redo the building?
I don't know. In, in the, in the West Hurley one, it was to tear everything down because it's.
Had a lot of concepts, yeah.
Wasn't Xena School purchased, uh, not long ago by two rock people, rock?
Yeah, rock, uh, rock, uh, academy and, uh,
All through.
Yeah, I don't think it, I don't know if the deal went through or not. I really don't know.
No, it went through. They just, uh, they're just now reselling it. They, they, their business broke into and so the, the one that still has it right now is selling it.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, uh, maybe RUBCO or a type of organization like that could do like a rent-to-buy arrangement with people to give them an incentive to work up towards owning and-
It would take something like RUBCO to, to do a project like that. It would.
They'd have to, even if they kept the building, which I think is probably feasible, the interior work would be extensive.
You know, I just recently was working in, uh, Woodstock Commons doing some survey and it, it is very nice. It, it, they did a nice job after all we went through on the planning board.
There's actually a town committee, um, on affordable housing headed by Susan Alexander, who's, uh, fundraising and she's got an installation right now in the middle of town. And, uh, I'm sorry?
Is that part of the comprehensive plan committees? I think it is, isn't it?
Is it? Because I'm curious whether they're connected to this, but they should really get connected to this.
Well, Connor is on a housing committee, so if it isn't the same committee, they really-
There's, there's, uh, a, a committee that's doing direct fundraising to try to create affordable housing in Woodstock and, uh, they're, they're very organized. They're very, I don't know, I think they should really get up, get on this because they would be great for this.
What do you mean she has an installation? What is that?
Um, it's a, it's an advertising installation for donations. It's right by Clouds, right in the center of town.
Oh.
And, uh, they're just in the early stages of trying to become like, uh, like a Woodstock Land Conservancy type of organization. But, um, they got a lot of support and they have a lot of, uh, they're looking to do a lot of fundraising.
Can you send me contact information?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
All right, great. Well, um, if anybody else comes up with ideas to supply to the, you know, to the committee or to the town board?
I have one. I think if we identified some specific areas that are currently, you know, R3s or I5s or something that we could present to the town board for rezoning for that purpose. If we had specific pieces of land that seemed suitable for the purpose, maybe-
If you had willing landowners.
It'd be Xena School. It'd be like also like the other school. Um, you know, those properties are just like sitting there, you know, and to rezone them and to make them attractive to developers or also through fundraising, you know, that would be the way to go.
What were you gonna say, John?
When the proposed zoning occurred in 1984, there was a proposal in that to reduce the size of the hamlet, the zoning requirements in the hamlet, so that we would allow affordable housing units. The public resistance was incredible. And we had to back off the zoning changes.
Forty years ago.
What, what year are you talking about?
1984. I know it's ancient history, James, but it-
No, I was just curious. It was also, I remember this from RUBCO too, around the 2000s when this went on.
Yeah, that, RUBCO was another fight. It was the, the attempts, the multiple attempts for affordable housing in this town. It's a real battle and you will find out.
You know, John, though, the, look at the trend. You have Sylvia's and everybody's, seems to be celebrating that. And there's another restaurant that was just before us tonight going in on Rock City Road that, you know, I imagine it's gonna be somewhat upscale. The whole trend business-wise is that most of the projects are all upscale projects. Who's gonna afford to live here, come back here to live if they're just starting out? You know, who's, who's gonna live here to work there and it's a real-
That is a major question, Stuart. I mean, it is the question. And the prices of houses in this town over the last year alone. It's skyrocketed. It's just been-
Well, that part, we have to hit, uh, developers and businesses like that to actually like, uh, do some type of, uh, sharing back into the community. And there's actually a lot we can do for that, like the board itself, but the town can in terms of like, you know, hey, you wanna build an upscale restaurant? That's great. You can also donate this for affordable housing, you know?
I may, John, to your point. Where you're referring to affordable housing back in 84, recently I'm noticing the, the jargon is changing to workforce housing.
That's a good first.
Stigmatized.
Yeah.
That's an excellent idea. And while workforce housing's been discussed, I would love to see it happen because it needs to happen.
It does.
Some probably, it, it, it suggests company towns and dormitories, but then that's my politics.
No, Woodstock would never make it look like that.
Melissa, do you have anything else to add to the meeting?
Actually, I do. Uh, I checked before we logged out tonight and Governor Cuomo extended until January 1st. We'll be doing Zoom until January 1st, guys.
Oh, we'll be doing Zoom longer than that.
Yes, John, I, I think we will be, but-
At least three weeks past Christmas for, for one thing.
We're good, yeah. I can schedule through then.
I'd love one in-person meeting before I have to leave the planning board next year, so.
Hey, John, you can come to my office and we can pretend or I'll meet you outside. With masks on.
How do we, how do we share, uh, pizza pie by zone? I don't know how we can do that.
No, we didn't get to use our meal budget this year.
All right, folks. Well, if there's nothing else, so entertain a motion to dismiss.
My dog looks like.
Move to a jar.
Hello, dog.
Oh, who's that, James?
That's my dog.
What's the name?
Delta.
Oh, Delta's beautiful. Look at those eyes.
What an interesting color.
Weirdo.
Does your, James?
Is he like a Siamese? He's got color on his points?
Like a cattle, cattle hula slash cattle dog, like crazy mutt.
Oh, Delta's welcome in my office too.
Does your dog bite?
No, she's a good girl. She has little stunt legs. She's like weird little.
All right, folks, did I get a second on that?
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Fine. Everybody stay well, stay safe.
Be healthy.
Yeah.
Good to see you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, everybody.
Thanks, Melissa. Thanks, Peter.
Thank you, Stuart.
Give that information, James, please.